Call roll to confirm a quorum.
Councilmember Abdelgawad.
Here.
Councilmember Boehner absent. Councilmember Holman.
Present.
Councilmember Hubach.
Present.
Councilmember Kellogg.
Present.
Councilmember Morehead.
Present.
Councilmember Stevens.
Present.
Councilmember Westcothe.
Present.
Mayor Kirkoff.
I'm present. Everybody please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do have a presentation tonight. This is a proclamation. Director Kennedy will join me here. And I'll give you the mic in just a minute, but I gotta read a whole bunch of whereas. Whereas park and recreation programs are an integral part of the communities throughout the country, and whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated the month of July as Park and Recreation Month, and whereas park and recreation programs are vitally important to the Raymore community by building healthy and active community, aid in prevention of chronic disease, provide therapeutic recreational services, and improve the mental and emotional health of all citizens, and whereas park and recreation programs increase a community's economic prosperity through increased property taxes, expansion of the local tax base, increase in tourism and attraction and the retention of business, and crime reduction, and whereas our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors. Now therefore, I, Peter Kirkoff, Mayor of the City of Raymore, Missouri, do hereby proclaim the month of July 2014 as Park and Recreation Month. So congratulations.
(applause).
I'll let you have the podium.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Mayor Kirkoff. We at Parks and Recreation think that every month is Parks and Recreation Month, but as the mayor stated, this is officially Parks and Recreation Month for July. The whole process for this is to try to get adults and kids to the outdoors. Two of the biggest problems we have in our society is obesity for both kids and adults and what we call screen time. The average child now spends seven and a half hours in front of some type of screen. We as children, most of us that is, when we grew up, we were basically told, "Go outside and play." Well, kids nowadays do not do that for a variety of reasons, but we feel that there is definitely what's called a nature deficit disorder in children and adults. And the goal of this month is to try to give everyone opportunity and reason to go out and appreciate the outdoors and all the things that our parks and nature have to provide. In other words, we want people in our community reconnect to nature, to get the opportunity to go out and experience the outdoors. Okay? I challenge everyone in Raymore as the residents to complete this calendar. I'm gonna show you. This is the Parks and Recreation Month calendar. Obviously, there's 31 days in July, and the objective of this whole thing is for you to do different things. For example, there's take a hike on a trail, spend a day with no electronics, pick up trash in a park, have a water balloon fight in your backyard, go play frisbee golf, see how many birds you can identify on parks and trails of Raymore. So in other words, there's 31 things on this, and I encourage everyone to do it. And if someone asked me today, "Well, what's the reward if this is completed?" Well, we don't have t-shirts to give away or proclamations or gifts of any kind. The reward is, first of all, it's better for your health, and it's better for you and your kids to get out and actually do some of these things. So I guess that's the reward that I hope everyone will experience and take the opportunity to do. Thank you for your time. Thank you all very much.
Continuing on, there are no personal appearances this evening, so we'll move on to staff reports. Mr. Fairborn?
Thank you, sir. I would ask that Ms. Warner please make a report from the city clerk's office.
Thank you. Just a note to council that there has been a correction on the agenda in its pertaining to the resolution reestablishing the Park Board liaison. The number has been corrected to reflect Resolution 14-39, and also replaces references within that resolution that reference the commission, the Park Board Commission. Those that has been replaced to appropriately notice at Park and Recreation Board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeanne. I'll call on Mr. Crass to make a report from Public Works.
Thank you, Mr. Fairborn. Mayor, members of the council, I've submitted my written report. Also want to report that the contractor is making progress on the curb replacement program in amongst the rainstorms, and we've also done some work on the 58 Culvert project. Contractor's got a few more days' work there before that's completed, but the rainy weather is kinda hindering things. And with that, I'm available for questions.
Question for staff. Councilmember Hubach?
Yes, I was going by the other day, and I noticed some staff, I don't know whether it was Public Works or whether it was the Park Department, but they were cutting the weeds that had gone up between the curb and the sidewalk, and I thought they were doing a good job, but my question is, don't we put down any kind of a weed kill so that they don't come up? Because they're just gonna keep coming and growing, and we'll keep moving and off. And I was wondering what we do. Do we have any kind of a program for weed kill on the weeds that grow on the streets and the gutters?
We do some spot applications, and with our seasonal crews that have just started, we will be doing more of that.
Other questions for staff? Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Just a few things to add to the staff report tonight. Reminder to the council that next Monday night is the 5th Monday, so there is no meeting scheduled. However, the license tax review committee will be meeting under the direction of Mr. Westco. Wanted to introduce to the city council our summer management intern, Ms. Alexa Case, is sitting in the back next to Ms. Watson tonight. And we, you all may be aware that our, one of our animal control officers, Ms. Sharon McKenny, lost her father last week, and we learned just a few minutes ago that she lost her mother just a little while ago.
Oh, my.
That concludes staff reports, sir.
Thank you. Go on to committee reports, and we have a roundabout welcoming feature committee report.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. The roundabout subcommittee meeting, committee met tonight at 6:15, and we had discussion with staff. Mike Crass was in attendance, and we are going to, we decided that we're going to meet on July 14th at 6 o'clock. Staff is going to attempt to set up a meeting with the contractor, Ochsner, Herr and Herr, for the design concept, and we're gonna try to begin negotiations for a feature down there, but more to come later.
Okay, thank you. We did have an economic development event. There was a grand opening ribbon cutting for Fearless Dance Center on June 17th. The new dance center is located in 104 North Madison in the building that was formerly used for Lynn Photography. Move on to the consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion to dispose of the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented to include Item A, city council minutes from June 9th, 2014; Item B, the appointment of Michelle Hiles Semir to Park Board; Item C, the appointment of Melinda Howdyshell to Park Board; and Item D, the acceptance of public improvements for High Point 2nd of Creekmore.
Second.
There is a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Westco?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just like to point out that Melinda Howdyshell has joined us this evening, and Michelle, now, I've heard it pronounced several different ways, so I wanna make sure that I get it right. Hiles, is it Semir's or Seemers?
Seemers.
Seemers, okay. They are both in the audience. Melinda is the appointment for Ward 2. I've gotten to know her very well over the last few months, and I just wanted to thank her for her willingness to serve, as well as Michelle's.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor? One, two, three, one, two, three, four. The motion passes unanimously. Move on to unfinished business. The second reading of Bill 2967 by title only.
The second reading of Bill 2967 by title only. An ordinance of the City of Raymore, Missouri, annexing property described as Lot 1 of Willow Hills subdivision, Section 10, Township 46 North, Range 32 West, Cass County, Missouri, and belonging to Donna Sotard pursuant to Section 71.014 of the revised statutes of the state of Missouri.
I entertain a motion to dispose of the second reading of Bill 2967.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Bill 2967, the voluntary annexation for Willow Hills Lot 1.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the second reading of Bill 2967. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. The second reading of Bill 2966 by title only.
The second reading of Bill 2966 by title only. An ordinance of the City of Raymore, Missouri, approving the final plat for Ridgeway Villas at the Legends, a subdivision in Section 17, Township 46 North, Range 32 West, in Raymore, Cass County, Missouri.
I'll entertain a motion to dispose of the second reading of Bill 2966.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Bill 2966, Ridgeway Villas final plat.
I second it.
There's a motion and a second to approve the second reading of Bill 2966. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Morehead?
Yes, really surprisingly, over the last few weeks, I've received a lot of phone calls regarding how the first reading of this bill transpired during our last public meeting. So I just wanted to take a moment and alert some of the citizens to a little about what has, what transpired, as well as make some comments to members of the council. First of all, this is a final plat. This is something that is not as discretionary as most matters that come before us. I know that the city attorney had stood up, passed out some paperwork, and many of us took a look at it and voted very quickly. The paperwork was very appropriate, and I was appreciative of the information from the city attorney, and I felt that that was appropriate on their part. And so, in this particular instance, I think one of the biggest problems with the issue regarding this development is that it's not that the rules were wrong, it's just that there was just a bad or uncomfortable feeling regarding the development itself. Unfortunately, you know, we have a lot of wonderful developers that have come before us, and there are certain expectations and understandings that we have, good communication, and when there's problems with that, there can be some bad feelings and some residual effect from that. And so, as far as this particular vote, the fact that this is being approved, it's being approved for us honoring the policy and the rules that we have in place. Now, when it's more discretionary, I speak for myself, I'm not gonna be quite as giving as far as that unless, till matters and communications starts improving, but when there's less discretion, that's why these kinda issues go without comment, and that was just one thing I wanted to communicate to citizens.
Other discussion? Councilmember Hubach?
I just wanna give them a little bit of a history. The area that we're talking about is south of Foxwoods Springs, and if people remember, it was the former Baron Nouse Horse Farm, and it was sold, and it became, the south half of it was into housing, and the north half of it was into commercial and was TIF property. And as such, anything that is TIF, whether it is residential or commercial, has to all meet the same rules and regulations. The northern half of it was all commercial, that's where Culvers is, and this area is, I understand, it is east of Culvers, and because it is residential then, it is a little bit different, but it is still in the TIF, and it is still a part of the TIF program, and it is governed by the same rules and regulations that all other planning and zoning meetings are.
Other comments? There's a motion and a second to approve the second reading of Bill 2966. All in favor? One, two, three, four, one, two, three, four, five. In opposition? There's two in opposition. Motion carries.
If it is mandatory because it is a ministerial act that we have to do, do we have the option of voting no?
I would, I'll hand it over to our city attorney, but I believe that a council member can vote up or down.
Well, now that the vote's over, Ms. Hubach, I'm pleased to. You always have the right to vote if you wish. What I had done last time in presenting, and I appreciate Councilman Morehead, was that your discretion in this case is based merely on the three factors of the final plat, whether it's consistent with the preliminary plat, whether it conforms with our ordinances, and you're really not legislating if you were, like it when it came for you for zoning or when it came before you for the initial TIF approval. That zoning was long gone approved, this preliminary plat was approved. So, though you have the discretion to vote no, it might not have been legally responsible to vote no. That's my opinion I expressed to you at the last meeting.
Councilmember Kellogg?
Yes, I guess I'll ask for a point of order, 'cause I think it's out of order unless I do, because we're, it's kind of a comment, but a question at this point, so I'll ask for a point of order.
What point of order would you like to make?
I'd like to ask a question of legal about the vote that we just took.
Okay. We can certainly do that. It is out of order. Councilmember Hubach asked a question out of order. It affects the flow of the stuff that we are doing this evening. Since I allowed Councilmember Hubach to her point, I'll allow your point, and I would ask the rest of the council members. Let's go on to the back to the council meeting.
And I thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate that. If our hands are tied, per se, to have to vote yes, basically, because that's, in essence, what this bill was about, we really didn't have any other way, I mean, we could've, but legality or legal recourse could follow. It just begs the question, the common sense question, why does it even come before the council? If it has to pass, why doesn't it just?
You're making a finding that the three factors were reached, that Mr. Catterett reported to you and put into the evidence the last time, that this final plat is consistent with the preliminary plat, that it meets the requirements of our ordinances, and is the same that was presented that you had approved earlier. So you are making a vote and making those three findings. What you weren't doing is finding whether you agreed with the initial zoning or this a project or anything like that, that was the narrow view of those three things, and that's what you were voting in favor of.
Thank you. We'll continue on. We have the second reading of Bill 2971 by title only.
The second reading of Bill 2971 by title only. An ordinance approving a transfer agreement between the City of Raymore, Missouri, and Ridgeway Villas at the Legends LP.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to dispose of the second reading of Bill 2971.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Bill 2971, transfer agreement, Ridgeway Villas.
Mr. Mayor, I second it.
We have a motion and a second to approve the second reading of Bill 2971. Is there any discussion? All in favor? One, two, three, four, one, two, one, two, three. In opposition? One, two, three, four. The second reading of Bill 2971 fails.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question concerning our vote on that.
So let's hold your question. The vote has already occurred. You can ask your question at the end of the thing in the mayor council communication. Again, I wanna keep the meeting moving forward in a proper fashion. Remember your question, though, because you're gonna get a chance at the end of the meeting. We have the second reading of Bill 2974 by title only.
The second reading of Bill 2974 by title only. An ordinance of the City of Raymore, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Will Pave, Inc., for the roadside trail rehabilitation project, City Project Number 14-196-201, in the amount of $184,427.72, and authorizing the acting city manager to approve change orders within established budget constraints.
Thank you. I entertain a motion to dispose of the second reading of Bill 2974.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Bill 2974, the award of contract for the roadside trail rehabilitation.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second to approve the second reading of Bill 2974. Is there any discussion? All in favor? One, two, three. Motion carries unanimously. The second reading of Bill 2968 by title only.
The second reading of Bill 2968 by title only. An ordinance of the City of Raymore, Missouri, approving an agreement with Credit Control LLC to provide bad debt collection services for the city.
Thank you. I entertain a motion to dispose of the second reading of Bill 2968.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Bill 2968, the award of contract for the collection of delinquent accounts.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the second reading of Bill 2968. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. And let's see, maybe we have the second reading of Bill 2972 by title only.
The second reading of Bill 2972 by title only. An ordinance of the City of Raymore, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Vance Brothers, Inc., for the 2014 micro-surface project, City Project Number 14-191-202, in the amount of $131,932.88, and authorizing the acting city manager to approve change orders within established budget constraints.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to dispose of the second reading of Bill 2972.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Bill 2972, the award of contract for the micro-surfacing portion of the 2014 street maintenance program.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the second reading of Bill 2972. Is there any discussion?
Just making sure, the number that Ms. Warner wrote off, that's a split between the two items here, the number, the dollar amount you read was different than the dollar amount on my, my paper, I think. I may have missed something. Because we have two of the micro-surfacing projects, I just thought maybe this was...
We have two contracts.
Okay.
We have the first contract.
I see, it says, I'm sorry, it says two contracts totaling, I see it now, it's there, I apologize. My bad, thank you.
Other questions? We have a motion and a second to approve. All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Yeah, and I think I mentioned last week, or last time we met, that there was two items under one letter, and that confused me, so. We have the second reading of Bill 2973 by title only.
The second reading of Bill 2973 by title only. An ordinance of the City of Raymore, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Phillips Paving Company, Inc., for the 2014 street preservation project, City Project Number 14-191-201, in the amount of $234,091.25, and authorizing the acting city manager to approve change orders within established budget constraints.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to dispose of the second reading of Bill 2973.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Bill 2973, the award of contract for the street preservation portion of the 2014 street maintenance program.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the second reading of Bill 2973. Is there any discussion? I'll just add, thank you for breaking them out into two things and saving the citizens some money. All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. The second reading of Bill 2969 by title only.
The second reading of Bill 2969 by title only. An ordinance of the City of Raymore, Missouri, amending City Code Section 110.165A regarding election results at the first regular meeting after the April election of mayor and council members in order to bring the City Code into conformance with the city charter.
Thank you. I entertain a motion to dispose of the second reading of Bill 2969.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Bill 2969, code amendment, certifying election results.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the second reading of Bill 2969. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. And that takes care of old business, we'll move on to new business. First item is a liquor license renewal, which is, requires a public hearing, so I'll open up the public hearing by calling for a staff report.
Thank you, sir. I would ask that Ms. Warner please make a report.
Warren Wiseman, owner of WW Grill Doing Business at Oliver's Pizza at 505 East Walnut, has filed an application for renewal of their 2014-2015 liquor license. Received late this afternoon and placed on the Diaz for you. As information received from the owner of the property, Lori O'Malley, as to the notification of termination of the lease with Oliver's Pizza. As outlined in Section 600.050B of the City Code, an executed lease is subject to the issuance of the renewal of the liquor license. In light of this information received late this afternoon, I'll defer the further staff report and any questions and answers to the city attorney.
Mayor, and ladies and gentlemen of the council, the attorney. On the date the application of this matter was received on May 30th for the renewal, the applicant presented a lease agreement dated January 2nd, 2013, which is a five-year lease, and was in good standing, therefore, with a bona fide lease at that time. The city clerk accepted the application and processed this to see that they met the requirements under 600.050. Late last week, I believe, the staff began to get information from the landlord, Ms. O'Malley, Freedom Plaza, that the tenant, in her opinion, was in default and was behind and hoped to grab some financing achieved that would take care of that default, but notified the city that there was a problem with the lease. Ms. Warner appropriately asked me for an opinion about what her role was, and I indicated to her, under legal authority, similar as when there's a councilwoman who files her residency, her job is to merely review the material that is presented, not to investigate and not to make a ruling whether or not there's a bona fide lease, but to present that information to you as the fact finder in this matter. So, in this public hearing, both the applicant and the landlord would have the right to present evidence to you about whether there is a bona fide lease or any of the other four requirements of good character and things, but with respect to this decision, it is discretionary with you whether or not you grant a liquor license under the terms of our code. And therefore, in my opinion, you hear the evidence, and you will have three options in this matter. You can say that it is, it did meet the requirements, there is a bona fide lease in effect, and nothing has legally said there's not one, there's not been a legal ruling by a court or a third party that there's not one, and therefore, you could grant the liquor license, which could have to be suspended or revoked thereafter if found not to have a bona fide lease. The second option you could make would be to deny the lease based on the evidence you hear that there is not a bona fide lease in effect as of June 23rd or the date you'd be asked to issue this license. And by the way, this license will go good on July 1st. They have an existing one, they sell, but it could be renewed to be in business in July, they would need to have their new license. The third option you would have, and I suggest this might merit some consideration, would be defer this issue to a meeting in July, and hear whether or not these parties themselves, either outside this, through legal or non-legal process, resolve the dispute between themselves as to whether this is a valid lease or there's a valid tenant here applying for this, because what they do not think we are, under the code or under the law of Missouri, is we're not a landlord-tenant court. You're a city council that issues liquor licenses if certain criteria that you have set up are met. So with that caveat and those three possible options for your consideration, I would invite the applicant and/or landlord to come forward and present their testimony to the council, and I would certainly be open to more questions, and any member of the public, of course, who wanted to be here. And I'd be open to any further questions you'd have after that, if there's not one before, from Councilman Westco, sir.
Questions of staff? Councilmember Westco?
Thank you, sir. Is the applicant in good standing with the city and with the state in regards to taxes owed?
They have complied with the requirements of their occupational license that was issued on May 30th, as you know, was the subject of a past public hearing, but the requirements of the liquor license have, or, I'm sorry, the application of the occupational license have been met. I have not been in contact with the state. Their license for the state would expire the same as the city, and that would be June 30th.
So to the best of our knowledge, they're in compliance would be the answer.
Councilmember Morehead?
Mr. Wellert, as far as when a liquor license is obtained, we have the requirement of a lease, so therefore, the business must have a premises to operate out of. If the tenant has no premises, are they still allowed to, they still would hold the license, but they would not be able to sell alcohol until they obtain a premises to sell from? Is that correct?
That would be correct. They need a valid sales contract or duly bona fide lease from an operation here within the city to qualify for our license. You are correct that if we issue it at this location, they could even apply to transfer it to another location if they meet the rest of the requirements. it to another location if they meet the rest of the requirements, and you find that the new location's appropriate. That's perhaps another reason why I am hesitant to have us get into the merits of a landlord-tenant dispute, but be as it may, there certainly is still a requirement, there must be a duly bona fide lease or sales contract somewhere for them to, in this city, for us to grant the license for this.
Mr. Mayor, if I may follow up. Now, my interpretation of landlord-tenant law in Missouri, though, is that's primarily for residential. Commercial landlord-tenant is more covered under the Uniform Commercial Code of the state, isn't that correct?
Well, the, the, the action's the same in that the breach, in my opinion, is, if there is a breach of a commercial lease or residential lease, it's a matter for the civil courts, not for our city council.
But if we approved the license because we felt that at the time of application they had met the requirements, if they have no premises, they can't go out on the streets and sell alcohol.
That is, that is suspended license.
That's absolutely correct. We would have to suspend their license if there's no valid premises from which they're to sell.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions of staff? Would the applicant like to come forward and make a statement? The applicant's here?
I just got here, so I'm trying to get it more clear, sorry. Can't you pay more?
Alrighty. Well, this is a public hearing, so I'll invite any member of the public to come forward, make comment, identify yourself for the record, and keep your comments to, what did we decide last time, three minutes? Under five.
Hi, I'm Lori O'Malley, Freedom Plaza LLC, they, five-zero-three, East Walnut, Raymore, Missouri, six-four-zero-eight-three. I am here today as the landlord of the premises in question for WW Grill LLC's liquor license renewal application. I am aware that their liquor license, or excuse me, that their lease was in force at the time of application. However, I, the lease has since been terminated on June tenth. If you would like for me to provide documentation to you, I'm more than happy to do that. I'm not actually aware of what day they, they filed for their license application, but I'm assuming that it was in force at their time of application. It was terminated on June the tenth, two thousand and fourteen, and obviously, this is the, whatever was provided at the time of application, this would be the only opportunity for, for me as a member of the public and as a party to the contract to, to make comment on it, or for the city to be aware if it was, they, if it is a bona fide contract. So, while I'm not here to speak of the law, I am here to speak of the, of the lease agreement. The proper notice has been sent to WW Grill LLC and to Warren Wiseman as an individual, both parties of the contract, that the lease is in default. Opportunity has been provided for him to cure the default. They have neither cured the default, nor have they made any arrangements to, to cure the default, and the, the lease agreement is terminated. We have worked with, with both WW Grill and with Warren Wiseman and tried to come to a reasonable resolution, that has not occurred. I'm more than happy to answer any questions or provide any documentation as to legal notices that have been sent. I, I do want to speak up the lease agreement that, the lease agreement itself provides the landlord the right to terminate the agreement without a court order. I would need a court order to gain possession of the property, and I would need a court order to obtain a judgment for the default of the lease. However, the lease itself does provide the right for the landlord to terminate the lease agreement itself.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If there's anybody else wanting to come forward and speak?
Mr. Mayor, if I could, I would like Mr. Wiseman to come forward, let me ask him a couple of questions with a bit of the council, he wants his license. Could you state your name and address for the record, please?
Oh, the Fargo five east Walnut.
Right. And you are Warren Wiseman?
Yes.
And you're the applicant for the liquor license, the renewal of the liquor license that, we're, in, at the Praised Place where you're doing business, at Oliver's Pizza, is that correct?
Yes.
And is the, is O'Malley, representing Freedom Plaza, your landlord at that location?
Yes.
She has provided documentation to the council that indicates she sent correspondence on June fifth and June tenth about a notice of default and lease termination. Did you receive either of those letters, Mr. Wiseman? And do you concur with their contest that you were some nineteen thousand dollars behind in rent at this time, at that occasion?
I disagree on that.
They also indicate in the letter that you were not contesting the, the termination of the lease. Do you agree that you were in default and the lease is now terminated, or do you contest that?
I contest that. I don't think it's, I don't, I don't think I'm, I'd owe that amount of money. And I'd like to get in a court to really find out, that's what I really want to do.
You, you did execute the lease of February, of January second, two thousand and thirteen, that was a five-year lease, correct?
Did I, I signed one?
Yes.
Yes.
And you've been occupying the premises and operating it as a business since that time, isn't that correct?
Yes.
And still do till today, isn't that correct?
Yes.
So you're asking the council to not find that, that your lease has been terminated, but rather find it still in effect and grant you the liquor license renewal? Is that your request here?
Yes.
You may inquire.
Questions of the applicant? Thank you. Any other public want to speak? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, and I'll entertain a motion to dispose of this item.
Mr. Mayor, I, I move that we postpone a vote on this item, on the...
Defer?
Defer, thank you. Defer action on this item until our first council member in, or council meeting in July, which I believe would be the fourteenth.
Okay. It's been a motion to defer to the first meeting in July, which would be July fourteenth. Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second to defer until July fourteenth. Councilmember Morehead and then Kellogg?
I was actually going to make the same motion, I concur with that. First of all, I, I would discourage us from getting involved in a civil matter between the parties, and obviously, there is, seems like an issue and dispute. I would hate to make a determination on this license and then have a change of circumstances afterward. If, if the applicant i- is not able to stay in the same premises and they're going to have to relocate, it is of interest to us to know where they would locate. So I would hate to decline or approve until they get a better footing to be able to find out what they're going to do. I think it'd be better for us to wait, and then once the dust settles, be able to revisit. And that would also give the applicant a little more flexibility to get this issue resolved. I know we won't get a court case resolved by then, but at least the issue of their location, which is paramount to us, they'd have a better chance to achieve.
Councilmember Kellogg?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with that. I have one question, concern. I believe Joe Staff, Joe, our attorney, Staff, the liquor license would expire July first, is, did I hear you correctly?
That's correct. Its last date would be in effect will be June thirty. So in essence, your decision tonight would mean he could not operate from July one to July fourteen, but that's not the end of the world either, in my opinion, in light of circumstances we have here.
I was just wondering if there was an extension, or if, if we failed, if something on our part, if we failed to not hear this, or, or act on this.
Let me correct myself. He could operate the rest of the business, he can't sell liquor from July first to July fourteenth, excuse me.
Other comments? Okay, there's a motion and a second to defer on this until July fourteenth. All in favor? One, two, three. Motion carries unanimously. And we'll move on to the second new item of new business, another liquor license. I'll open, or, open the public hearing by asking for a staff report.
Crystal Goff, on behalf of the pit grill and bar at twelve forty-two West Foxwood Drive, has filed an application for the renewal of their 2014-2015 liquor license. The applicant has met requirements of the City Code and staff does recommend approval. Approval by a majority of the council is required, and approval to serve liquor is subject to the state requirements. The applicant, I do believe, is in the audience, should council have any questions.
Okay. Thank you. Would the applicant like to come forward and make a comment?
I'm Lori O'Malley.
Okay, that's why. I'll open the floor to the public. Anybody who would like to make a comment, please come forward, state your name for the record, and keep your comments to under five minutes. Seeing no one to come forward, I'll close the public hearing and ask, I'll entertain a motion to dispose of this item.
Mr. Mayor, move that we approve the liquor license renewal for the pit bar and grill, or grill and bar.
Second.
There is a motion and a second to approve the liquor license renewal. Is there any comments? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Takes care of that. And let's see, we'll move on to fourth draft of the Bill twenty-nine sixty-one-A. I have a first re, well, staff report.
Thank you, sir. I would ask that Mr. Catterett please make staff report.
Thank you. Back on May, May twelfth, twenty fourteen, council postponed action on Bill twenty-nine sixty-one to this evening's meeting. And staff this evening is requesting council to again postpone action on Bill twenty-nine sixty-one until your August twenty-fifth, twenty fourteen meeting. What we'd also request is for council to then hold a work session to discuss the proposed ordinance at your July twenty-first, twenty fourteen scheduled work session date. Staff would propose as part of that work session where we would distribute notice to all interested parties, anybody that's expressed interest in the ordinance, to advise them of the work session, and then also request that council allow public comment at that particular work session. We feel that this particular ordinance with a lot of comments that came out of the May twelfth meeting could be best handled in a work session format rather than a public hearing format at a regular meeting. So that is the request of the staff this evening.
Questions of staff? Councilmember Wesco?
Can we specify that for the work session, that if whoever wants to speak, let us know ahead of time so that we can prepare adequately how long we're going to be in the work session? Make it to where, you know, the people who we notify, if they want to speak, they need to let us know, just, just out of common courtesy.
Well, the council could choose to do that. Councilmember Delgoon?
I, I was just wondering if there might be a chance to have representatives from the Corps or Missouri Department of Natural Resources, or people, I mean, I know in the past we've had a lot of questions for those groups. I'm wondering, will they be invited to come to the work session? Will they be given that opportunity?
We can certainly extend the invitation to those organizations, yes.
Other questions of staff? Count, well, we got two here. Well, I'm going to bounce back to, we'll, we'll just stay on this side of the dais, bouncing back to Councilmember Wesco and then Abdo Delgoon.
And just to make sure, when we have our work session, the questions that, that the people get to ask are directed towards the council, and we're not opening up anybody else that would be there to direct lines of questions from anybody who decides to show up. I mean, the, the last thing I want to see is this to get out of hand. I mean, I'm all for the work session, you know, we, we need input, but at the same time, the questions, I believe, need to be directed towards us. Otherwise, you know, this becomes a grilling of a government agency, which I do not believe is the appropriate forum, and I know I don't want to be a part of that.
Councilmember Wesco, are you suggesting the staff lose their, a regular planning commission format then, with time limits for speakers and so many, you know, ten minutes for a group, thirty minutes for an individual or something, and, and direct everything to the thing as opposed to an open discussion?
Absolutely.
Councilmember Delgoon?
I'm not sure that's the best format for that meeting, just, just to throw that out there. It seems, in my opinion, that it might make better sense. The, the goal here is to get a document that is going to give us the best protection of our streams, as well as, you know, basically working, working this out to find a solution that works for everybody. And I, I'm afraid that a three-minute, you have to sign up and speak type of meeting is not going to achieve what, what we are going for. We kind of discussed having it as a, at a work session, so we would have more of a give-and-take conversational feel than a stand-up and speak at the podium like a public hearing. However, I was wondering, when this comes before the council again on August twenty-fifth, will that be another public hearing at that meeting because we closed the public hearing before?
It would be the intention of staff to advertise it as a public hearing, it'll open a new public hearing, yes.
Councilmember Morehead?
Kind of mirror some of the comments made by the right side of the dais. I, I kind of feel the same way. My concern is, I don't want to just turn this into another open-mic night for public forum. I mean, the idea that I, at least the way I interpreted this was, there are updates, we've had some modifications, some new information, and an opportunity for us to discuss things. I, I really would not like to see a repeat where people just get up and restate stuff they've already stated before. The purpose is for the council at the work session, not, I mean, because we can, is the public, public hearings still open on this topic?
We'll, we'll open a new public hearing on, if, if this is deferred to the twenty-fifth, it'll be a new public hearing on, on the council meeting on the twenty-fifth.
Yeah, so I mean, the publics would still have an opportunity to speak on it. I just, I would like to see more productivity out of the work session, so I really would like to ho, I would hope that we would not turn this into outside speakers take up the whole time.
No, we could certainly limit the time, as was suggested, like we do for the P and Z. Councilmember Hubach, did you have a comment?
Yes, did all of you get the letter from, was it Ruth Wallace this afternoon? Well, one of the things that I wanted to make sure of is that we are on the same page as to the revision, is I understood the letter, she wasn't sure that her revision copy was the same that everybody else was working on. So that would be the first thing that I would want to know, is that we're all using the same revision, that we're all talking about the same thing. And then the second thing is, I think we've had a lot of input from the different individuals, and I think we know where they stand. It's just that we have questions that we need to have answered, and that, for one of the things, one of the questions that I would like to have answered, I know Mr. Good made the comment about he would lose up to thirty percent of his, some of his property, I would like to know the area that he is talking about on that, you know, whether he's, is owned for commercial, residential, or just what. I'd like to know how the specifics on how that subdivision would be affected, and also if Mr. Jackson is affected, how he would be the same way. So, to me, a public hearing is not necessarily what we're after. I'm kind of like Sancho, we need to figure out for ourselves the questions and things that we need to ask. And that, once we do that, then maybe we can come back and, and have the public hearing again. But I, we've had so many public hearings, and I don't think that has settled anything.
Councilmember Wesco?
Here, here's my concern. There are very specific questions that I want to ask, and the people that I want to ask, it's my fear if we have it a free-for-all, and we just open it up to where those people can be asked questions as well, the people who I want to be in attendance will choose not to be in attendance in that type of a forum. So, you know, there are questions that I need to ask so that I can make a decision. And if we open it up for anybody who has a political axe to grind against this government agency, or that government agency, or, or what have you, then those people will choose not to attend. I would like them to attend, much like in the letter that we received today. I want their participation. But if we open it up to where they can be asked questions, they might choose not to attend, which does us a disservice in making our choice.
Okay, there's, I'm going to try to encapsulate the, the comments here. There has been a proposal or a suggestion by city staff that the council defer action on this item, to have a work session on July twenty-first, including an area for public comment. It's been suggested that we use a format that we use at the P and Z, which we keep the comments to three minutes. Comments would be addressed then to the council, not to the, yeah, the participants. And then after that public comment, then on the August twenty-fifth council meeting, the bill will come before the council again in, with a public hearing, in, in the normal council format. So, if I've stated it correctly, I, I would entertain a motion to defer action on this item to the August twenty-fifth council meeting. item to the August 25th council meeting, but with a, a work session on July 21st.
Mr. Mayor, move that we defer action on the 19th amendment to the Unified Development Code until August 25th, 2014, with a work session on July 21st with the stated specifications.
Use them in the P&amp;Z format.
I second it.
And we have a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Alrighty. We're down to the first reading of Bill 2977 by title only.
The first reading of Bill 2977 by title only. In ordinance of the City of Raymore, Missouri, approving the final plat for Meadowwood of the Good Ranch Third Plat, lots 86 through 113, and tracks A, B, and C, a subdivision in Section 20, Township 46 North, Range 32 West, in Raymore, Cass County, Missouri.
There's a staff report, please.
Thank you, sir. I'll ask Mr., I'll ask Mr. Catterett to make staff report.
It's okay, I haven't called you Mr. Berlin this evening yet, okay? I am happy.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you. Bill 2977 does propose the approval of the Meadowwood of the Good Ranch Third Final Plat. This particular phase of the subdivision is located on the east side of Dean Avenue, south of Lucy Webb Road. There's a proposed 28 lots within the subdivision that covers a little over 15.6 acres of land. The property is zoned R1P, which is our single-family planned residential district. Having the planned zoning district, what, what that overlay does is modifies the development standards that apply to the land, and so in the staff report, I have included what the development standards would be for this particular subdivision. And these standards are consistent with the other phases of Meadowwood, so be very similar to the other development that has occurred within that, within that subdivision. The developer has proposed some common area tracks along both Dean Avenue and Box Ridge Drive to allow for some landscaping between the trafficway and the residential lots. I do want to note in the staff report, I, I identify the Water District 10 territory in a statement, and just want to make sure council's aware that the south, approximately the south half of the subdivision, about 14 of the 28 lots are located within the territorial area of Water District Number 10. And under the agreement with Water District 10, those lots shall be served water through the Water District. We, we are with the final plat, we are proposing with the plat to, again, plat lots within the Water District. However, again, under the current agreement, those lots would be served by the Water District. I just want to identify that. And the development agreement does contain language regarding that. As, as you are aware, you know, the city has been in discussions with the Water District on serving water to residential areas within the territory of the district. We have reviewed plans for the subdivision as if the entire subdivision was to be served by the city. But the clause in the development agreement clearly states that unless the Water District allows the city to serve these lots, that these lots shall be served by the Water District, it'll be the responsibility of the developer to, to make that connection. So I just wanted to provide clarification that, where the district boundary line is in relation to this subdivision, and how the lots would be served by the utility. The, that development agreement has been included in your packet for this evening for your review. The planning commission did submit proposed findings of fact on the review of this final plat, and at their June 17th meeting, they did vote 6-0 to accept the findings and forward this case to the council with the recommendation of approval. Thank you.
Thinking, questions of staff? Councilmember Wesco?
Is, would this plat be adversely affected by the 19th amendment, the one that we had just discussed? Or is this one in compliance with the spirit of, of the changed ordinance?
This one has preliminary plat approval, so no matter what we do with the 19th amendment, this, this land is currently exempt from the, from the stream buffer.
Other questions of staff? Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to dispose of the first reading of Bill 2977.
Mr. Mayor, move that we approve Bill 2977, Meadowwood of the Good Ranch Third and Final Plat.
Second.
There is a motion and a second to approve the first reading of Bill 2977. Is there any discussion? All in favor? One, two, three. Motion carries unanimously. Move on to Bill 2979. Staff report, or, excuse me, I got, I got it out of order. We have the first reading of Bill 2979 by title only, and then I'll ask for a staff report.
The first reading of Bill 2979 by title only. In ordinance of the City of Raymore, Missouri, approving and authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Campione Interior Solutions to provide and install City Hall carpeting for an amount not to exceed $73,980, and authorizing the acting city manager to approve change orders within established budget constraints.
A staff report, please.
Thank you, sir. The fiscal year 2014 capital budget includes a project to replace the aging and worn carpet here at City Hall. Accordingly, staff issued a request for proposal for firms to do this replacement. Two proposals were received, and staff recommends a word of contract to the lowest and best bidder, Campione Interior Solutions, in the amount of $73,980.
Questions of staff? Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to dispose of the first reading of Bill 2979.
Mr. Mayor, move that we approve Bill 2979, the award of contract for the City Hall carpet replacement.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the first reading of Bill 2979. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. We have the first reading of Bill 2975 by title only.
The first reading of Bill 2975 by title only. In ordinance of the City of Raymore, Missouri, approving and authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Mission Electronics, Inc., to provide purchase and installation of acoustical sound panels in the council chambers for an amount not to exceed $26,868, and authorizing the city manager to approve change orders within established budget constraints.
A staff report, please.
Thank you, sir. Several months ago, the city council requested staff to research methods to improve the sound quality here in council chambers. Staff received a number of recommendations from outside firms, and one area that was recommended was to reduce the ambient noise and noise echo that takes place within this room. One project recommended to help with this area was to replace the existing particle board panels on the walls with sound-rated acoustical panels. Staff did accordingly issue a request for proposal and received a single proposal, which has been determined to be a qualified bid according to the city purchasing policy. Staff recommends a word of contract to Mission Electronics in the amount of $26,868.
And questions of staff? Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to dispose of the first reading of Bill 2975.
Mr. Mayor, move that we approve Bill 2975, the award of contract for the city council chambers acoustic panel installation.
Second.
There is a motion and a second to approve the first reading of Bill 2975. Is there any discussion? Yep. Councilmember Wesco?
So, if we put these panels in, does it make us all sound better?
The city attorney is giving affirmative. We will see. Good point. There are motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Might sound better, but I don't think it'll make any of us brighter. Yeah, the first reading of Bill 2978 by title only.
The first reading of Bill 2978 by title only. In ordinance of the City of Raymore, Missouri, amending the fiscal year 2014 capital budget.
A staff report, please.
Thank you, sir. The acoustical panel replacement project in the preceding agenda item was proposed following approval by the city council of the fiscal year 2014 capital budget. With the passage of Bill 2975, it is necessary to fund this project by passage of a budget amendment to the fiscal year 2014 capital budget. Staff recommends a budget amendment in a proposal amount of $26,868, plus a small contingency, if necessary, of 5% or $1,343 for a total budget amendment of $28,211.
Thank you. Questions of staff? Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to dispose of the first reading of Bill 2978.
Mr. Mayor, move that we approve Bill 2978, the amending of our fiscal year 2014 capital budget.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the first reading of Bill 2978. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. That takes us down to the first reading of Bill 2976 by title only.
The first reading of Bill 2976 by title only. In ordinance of the City of Raymore, Missouri, approving and authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Video Services America to purchase video server equipment for an amount not to exceed $10,355, and authorizing the acting city manager to approve change orders within established budget constraints.
Thank you. A staff report, please.
Thank you, sir. The fiscal year 2014 budget includes an item to replace the media room equipment that allows us to both push out our video signal to cable providers and tape our meetings. The existing equipment is old and requires a great deal of service. The new equipment will provide a better signal, improve visual quality of the meetings being broadcast, and less service need. Staff issued a request for bid and received four qualified bids for the equipment as specified. Staff does recommend a word of bid to the low bidder, Video Services America, in the amount of $10,355.
Thank you. Questions of staff? I'll entertain a motion to dispose of the first reading of Bill 2976.
Mr. Mayor, move that we approve Bill 2976, the award of bid for the media room video server.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the first reading of Bill 2976. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Wesco? Yes, it will make us look better.
Well, no, no, that's, that's actually my fear, is that, you know, those of us that have, you know, the face for radio, the fact that this is going to be a better quality means that they're going to see us better. I, I don't know if I'm supportive of that, sir.
Well, you, you did make motions, so. All in favor? One, two, three. Motion carries unanimously, even though Councilmember Wesco is fearful of being on TV in a clear fashion. Uh, let's see, we'll move on to the next item, which, first, the reading of Resolution 1426.
The reading of Resolution 14-39 by title only.
I've got the wrong number here, sorry.
A resolution of the Raymore City Council reestablishing the position of council liaison to the Park and Recreation Board.
And noted for the record that you told me that what the correct number was at the beginning of the meeting. Now, a staff report, please.
Thank you, sir. Following discussion of this item at the joint meeting of the city council and park board on June 2nd, 2014, staff was directed to bring this item forward for city council consideration. Accordingly, Resolution 1439 has been prepared for your consideration.
Thank you. Is there any questions of staff? Okay. I'll entertain a motion to dispose of Resolution 1439.
Mr. Mayor, move that we approve Resolution 1439, establishing a member of the council as a park board liaison.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve Resolution 1439. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Morehead, and then Abdo Gwad.
I'm going to speak in favor of this. This actually was a topic that actually was brought up during, when three of the council members attended a recent elected officials training in Jefferson City with the Missouri Municipal League, and there was some discussion about this. Most of the discussion negative was when a board was, like the Board of Adjustment, Planning and Zoning, but when the discussion came to a board that is a quasi-board that is connected under the council, there was some, a, a little looser interpretation that a council member serving as a non-voting liaison would actually not be duplicating their role because the two entities are not together. One of the thoughts that brought about this to reinstate the liaison position was the idea that we would like better communication with Park and Rec. Now, and zero complaint about Mr. Kennedy in the staff reports that he gives, but we don't have enough time at the beginning of our public meetings here to hear every single thing that could, he could offer us. And we do get some very good email communication regarding that, but there had been some instances where if a non-voting member of the council would have been in attendance and been able to participate, there would have been some quicker issues resolved, better closure, and less misunderstanding. I know we meet quarterly, but I think it's fair to say that many of those meetings tend to be somewhat ceremonial. We don't really dive into issues. And this would allow a, a person from the council to be there to see and hear what the park board is talking about, and to be able to communicate with them. This is a non-voting position. I do have to say, I see it more in the role of as staff is sitting before us rather than a ninth, a ninth member on the panel. I also believe that, I, I seriously doubt that any one of us are so linguistically brilliant that if we were to dare offer our opinion, that eight people would go against their belief systems. So, being a non-voting member is not going to be a power position within this board, but it would offer opportunity. And there have been instances where I have attended park board meetings, I, no criticism of how they're run, but I also know that under normal procedure, I would not be able to communicate and offer suggestions during the discussion point of each topic, and I would have had to wait to the very end of the meeting to offer an opinion or state a fact. The problem is, the vote would have already occurred, so therefore the opinion is, is moot. So, the only thing this really allows is for a, a member of the council to be able, if willing, to sit like a staff member and to be able to participate as a topic is discussed. So, I think it's a valued position. It doesn't hurt anything. The park board still has autonomy. It's just an opportunity for us to, to bridge both ways better and communicate better.
Councilmember Delgoon?
And I, I guess I'll speak on the other side of the coin. I am very much against this. I feel like we do our job as council members here, and we ask the park board to do their job there. As Ms. Hubach has stated several times, lots of times, the council has a lot of discretion over things the park board does that we really maybe shouldn't have, and I think having someone at their meetings every time would allow just one more opportunity for the council to, to have some control over the park board, which we shouldn't. I think that if there's a lack of communication between the council and the park board, as I said in our work session, I think that falls in the lap of the Director of Parks and Recreation, or the laps of, of us as council members, quite honestly. We have the opportunity to ask questions of the Director of Parks and Recreation, we have email addresses for everyone on the park board, we ha- we are able to see the agendas before their meetings, we're able to see the minutes after their meetings, we, their meetings are videotaped and shown online and on cable TV, just as ours are. I really fear that this would be a position that someone could misuse their power or assert a personal agenda. As the park board members are just volunteers, I think that lots of times they look to us for guidance, and sometimes I worry that having one council member there to try to voice what they believe the opinion of the council is, even as, when they're asked questions by park board members, I don't think it's fair, and I sure wouldn't want to be in that position, to try to tell that board what the council, how the council might feel on a matter. I don't think that's a fair place to put someone, and I don't think it would be fair for one of us to try to express the opinion of all of us. So, I am very against this. I know we all received an email from Brian Harris, the Director of the Park Board as well, and he doesn't seem to feel like this would be a worthwhile position either.
Councilmember Wesco?
You know, I, I would, I'd like to point out that we have a fantastic Parks and Rec department. We have great programs, we have great facilities, and we've also had this position before, up until, I'm assuming from the time that we became a charter city until 2009. So, that, the fact that we already had a council member in this position that served up until the, until 2009, when that council decided that they didn't want to put anybody else on it, I think is a testament to the fact that, you know, the council isn't going to corrupt the park board. They operated fine with the council liaison, and it actually created open communication channels between the two government boards. You know, the thing that I find interesting is that the fact that it was done away with was because none of the council members at the time wanted to serve on it. So, it wasn't that it wasn't needed, it's just that nobody wanted to do it. So, I think it was extremely short-sighted that they did away with it in 2009, and I think in the fact that we have some major projects before us, I think it's a very reasonable position to reinstitute. Again, it, we're not creating a new position, we're just basically going back to what our, you know, I assume the charter had said when, or our municipal code said, when we, when we became a charter city. when we became a charter city.
Councilmember Kellogg?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with most of what Mr. Wesco just said. Um, I disagree some, somewhat, but it's moot, but, uh, what I do want to point out is that back then, um, when there was a liaison, and we had, during my involvement, there was two different ones, and, uh, it was appointed by the mayor. Uh, he appointed the person, and they served. Um, it wasn't selected by the council members, it was appointed by the mayor, it is, and we, if I remember it, I believe we, we voted on it as the council, and I think we will in the future, too, uh, you know? But I remember some uproar when we got rid of it, you know? So, in 2009, we got rid of it, there was uproar, and now we're, we're thinking about taking it back, or not taking it back, but reinstituting it. Now, we have the opposite uproar, you know? I mean, it's one of those things, you're, you're darned if you do, darned if you don't. Um, I didn't see anywhere in, in my time of involvement on the council where the position was used to, uh, influence, hammer a head, or anything like that. Uh, it was, it was instituted or used as another form of communication. Now, where, where I differ is that the, there was two different council members that served in that, that capacity when, in my involvement. Uh, one was very involved, very, uh, astute, very concerned, and, and just really involved. The other one, you know, I, I'll say that the, the level of enthusiasm was, wasn't as high, you know? Uh, so, when they, when we did away with that, it wasn't so hard for me to say, okay, you know, because I didn't see the enthusiasm there. But, um, I, I just find it real peculiar, not peculiar, but odd that, how things are cyclic, you know? 2009, we had all kinds of people screaming, "Don't do away with that, you're, you're taken away from the park board." Now, 2014, "Don't do that, you're gonna, you're gonna take away from the park board." So, you know, darned if you do, darned if you don't. So, anyway, that's all I got there.
Councilmember Hubach?
I have two questions to start out with. One, I haven't heard you all say what you think the duties of the liaison supposed to be, outside the fact that it's going to be non-voting. Are they going to be allowed to speak up, or are they going to just sit and take notes and come back and tell us what, uh, transpired? Exactly what do you expect from the liaison, uh, to do, report back to the council? That's one thing. Then another one is, in the resolution itself, I haven't seen a single reason given why it is necessary. All I have heard is, "We need to do this because more or less, we need oversight of them, and we want to be able to go to meetings." We already have oversight, we already go to the meetings, we already get a copy of their, um, minutes, we already can hear them on, uh, television. What is there that you feel that is missing? To me, it comes right down to, we don't want to turn loose of them and, and let them be semi-autonomous. The state statute says they have control, sole control of the money that is given to them. We don't want them to have sole control. We want to be able to tell them what to do. It's cut, it is, and I, it's, uh, any one of us, I'm saying the council as a whole doesn't want to turn loose. It's an ego issue for us. We are in control of the city, and we want to be in control of the park department. And these are people that we say are capable of running the park department, but we don't want to give them the authority to do it. We insist upon a memorandum of understanding, which is not required or even called for in the state statutes. We insist upon a liaison, which is not called for under the state statutes in any way. It says, "Let those people run the park department," and they've done a good job so far, let them keep on doing it. Now, can you all tell me what the duties are going to be, so that I will know whether I should try to vote for it, or change it, or what?
Councilmember Morehead, and then Wesco?
You know, interesting enough, what I'm hearing is, is the split on the council is the word "control," and the people that are speaking out against this fear that we're going to control the park board. But the people who are speaking in support of this aren't using the word "control." And, and I think the big catch is that, I mean, first of all, don't you have to know the question to know the, and the topic, to know to ask Mr. Kennedy the question? If we're always playing reactive, if we always have to wait till we can look at a minute, some minutes that are 30 days stale, or watch a video that's two weeks old, how do we, how can we interject anything at that time to be able to offer them some value? This is just an extra person in the deliberative process. This is not a person controlling anything. As far as the duties go, first of all, the park board is the one that manages the meeting, not the council member. So, the council member is actually having to ask permission to even speak, no different than any board member would anyway on the park board. But the opportunity to have somebody there, sitting in a seat, that if a member of the park board or, or their staff wishes to ask what is an existing policy of the council, or for the council to be able to, liaison to provide a resolution from the past, to offer some history on something, that's not controlling, that's just providing better information, and that's just being more deliberative. Instead of eight opinions, yes, you get a ninth input, only if the park board wants to allow that input. So, really, the role is not very sexy. It's not very controlling at all. It's just an extra person. But again, yes, we could watch on TV, yes, we could be in attendance, but we're not allowed to talk under normal procedural rules until after they vote. So, therefore, we have no input at that point. So, that, that's the, that's the difference that I'm seeing, and I hope I answered your questions.
Hold on, you'll be after Councilmember Wesco?
And I'd like to add on that. First of all, I'd like to thank Councilmember Kellogg for his, uh, insight into what actually transpired during that, that timeframe. That's, it's very helpful to know that we still had a council member that was around during that timeframe. Um, but I'd also like to add that, you know, what this person does, even though they're a non-voting, uh, member, it brings a different perspective to that board. See, when, when the park board meets and, and they start looking at different programs, they look at it from the park and rec's perspective, uh, just like, uh, you know, the director does. You know, when he gives us, uh, his report, he's immersed in parks programming. So, his perspective comes from that way. Whereas, this person would actually bring a council perspective to the conversation, so they can interject and say, "Hey, you know, this is how this could be looked at from a council perspective." So, it just gives them one more idea of, okay, you know, it's just, it's just a different point of view, uh, that I think would actually be constructive, uh, as opposed to destructive. You know, somebody saying, you know, as a council member, we look at budgets. Well, you know, I don't know if the parks board looked at budgets the way we look at budgets, um, but again, it's just, it's just another point of view.
Councilmember Hubach?
How many of you think that you speak for me on any issue? All right? That's, that's what I'm saying. Since none of you speak for me, I speak for myself. When you go to a park board meeting, you're not speaking on, and, uh, it's what the council is asking, and anything, because nobody speaks for me, nobody speaks for you. We speak as one voice, one voice only, at a council meeting, not, we don't go together. And what you all are saying, you want us to do to the park board, well, we won't let citizens do for us. We won't let citizens come and interrupt us when we're deliberating on a issue. We have very few public hearings, and those are only when we're required to. But like I said, nobody, nobody speaks for me, I don't speak for you. Let us come, if we have an issue with the park, uh, board in any way, shape, or form, then we need to, to work together and meet with them together, not Mr. Kennedy, because he only, he is an employee. Our peers are the park board, and it is semi-autonomous, and let them work and do their job.
Councilmember Abdolgawad, and then Morehead?
Um, just a couple of things that have come up in, in this discussion. I, I question why we think we need input at their meeting. If we're going to not try to control what they're doing, um, I just, in, I don't understand why we feel like we need to have a council member at their meetings for input, to give them anything. That, that doesn't make sense to me. Having been on the park board, I can't think of a time I was in a meeting and thought, "Oh, well, I wish we knew what the council thought about that," you know? Because the park director is the person who gets to guide the park board, and it's their job to prepare things, and they have to bring it to us for budget stuff, which, I'm with Ms. Hubach, I'm not sure, really is the right way it should go, but I think that they should be doing things without the input of the council, without our direction. Um, I don't think that, that's something that we need to try to give them. Um, I think, as I said, we heard from, from some of them that that's not necessarily what they want. Why are we trying to put ourselves into their board when they're not asking for that? Um, I see, planning and, with planning and zoning, we have a schedule of what's coming up on their agenda quite some time in advance. We haven't seen that from park board yet. I know communication's something that we've really been working on the last few years with the parks department, and so, I mean, I think that we just need to continue to work there, but I don't think having a council member on that board is the right way to, to work that communication in. And lastly, I think, as I said before, if we want to share our input with the members of the park board, the way we need to do that is by looking at their agendas prior to the meeting and sending emails to them, just like they do to us. If there's something coming up on a council agenda that they want to give us their input on, then they have that opportunity, just like we do. If we, as council members, pay attention to what's going on in their agendas, in their minutes, that's the way we get to provide our input, and not by being one person trying to speak for the entire council at their meetings.
Councilmember Morehead?
Again, this gets back to that control issue, but I'll comment about input. Why is it the assumption is only that we are giving input? What about the park board giving input? That's a two-way street. And in fact, why can't we be, the, the same question is posed, why can't we be an asset to the park board, to be available to answer questions? First of all, in the last calendar year, five members of the park board have approached me and asked, "Boy, Derek, we wish one of you could have been there, because we had a question, and we couldn't ask it, and we would have loved to have posed a question to you." Now, Ms. Hubach, I, I will address the comment that she made about, um, speaking for other council members. Actually, Ms. Hubach, you speak for council members all the time. You actually do speak for more than just yourself, in the sense that we embrace the fact that you share history of the past councils that you have sat on. Councilmember Kellogg just spoke about some history as well. Now, you're stating the policies of eight other people when you talk about the past, but what is the context of how we're receiving that? See, the problem is, is if I or any other member sits as a liaison, we're not here to be the dictator at that table. But at the same time, if the board wants to ask a question as to whether there has ever been a previous resolution, or whether a different department handles something differently, for us to be able to answer that question is totally different than speaking for the members of the council. I think we have a concern with the, this concept of power. Uh, again, the people that have spoken against this fear about input and control and all these very aggressive things. The other members are talking about being available to the coun, to the park board, which is a completely different context and a completely different intent of this resolution.
Councilmember Wesco?
You know, I'd also like to, to speak just briefly about our MOU, or in our agreement with, um, with the park board. Um, you know, I, I think we, we only have to look to our, our neighbor to the west, and the, the budget issue that they got into a few years ago, you know, their park board has that autonomy, and, and, and they can act, and they got into a $500,000 deficit that the city council then had to try to figure out how to deal with it. So, I, I don't think our MOU says, "We have the power." I say, I think what it says is that, you know what, we're going to work together to make sure that that exact situation doesn't happen in Raymore. Because the last thing I want to have to deal with is a board to come to us and say, "You know what, we screwed up, now you have to figure out how to deal with a half a million dollar mistake."
Other comments? Okay, there is a motion and a second to approve Resolution 1439. All in favor? One, two, three, four, five opposed? One, two. And if I counted right, that's five in favor and two opposed, motion carries. And move on to Bill 2980. We have the first reading of Bill 2980 by title only.
The first reading of Bill 2980 by title only. In ordinance of the city of Raymore, Missouri, amending section 500.175B of chapter 500, building regulations of the Raymore City Code.
A staff report, please?
Thank you, sir. I'll call on Mr. John Warner to make staff report.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Included with the adoption of the 2012 International Residential Code, uh, there was a local amendment in section 501.3 to eliminate the requirement of fire protection of floor assemblies, except for just web frame trusses. Uh, that I have with us here today is Randy Powers, a fire marshal, South Metro, and he's here to answer any of the questions regarding these kinds of joists, and it's only about joists that are being used, such as web trusses, floor trusses, and I-joists. And what would, what we're proposing is to go back to the original language that is in the IRC. There's exceptions in the IRC that allow, if you put a sprinkler system in, uh, or if you use two-by-tens conventional framing, um, or if you use products, which there are products out there, that are fire-rated I-joists and fire-rated web joists, or spray-on products as well, too. If the builder chooses not to use that, then we're going back to the original language proposing to add the half-inch requirement of gypboard, gypsum wallboard underneath the floor systems for fire protection. And the reason for this is that there has been, uh, in fighting fires, failures of these I-joists, uh, a lot quicker than, say, just two-by-ten framing. Now, if Mr. Powers is there, could answer some of those questions. He has some reports that's been done throughout the nation regarding the time that it takes for a failure of I-joist specifically and web joist. Basically, we're just recommending to go back to the original language.
Questions of staff? Councilmember Wesco?
I, I used to frame houses, and I think I, we used, uh, these type of joists in one house. Is it a two, basically two two-by-twos with press board in between?
That's correct, sir, with glue.
Which, I, I don't, I don't know if anybody else has ever built houses in the winter, uh, when it would get cold. We would actually use the press board to start the fires, because it burns very, very well. Um, so, so my question to staff is, would it make more sense just to ban these altogether, uh, their use in Raymore?
Um, that answer would be no. It's, it's a market-driven, uh, product. It does reduce labor, uh, for the builder, so I would recommend not to abandon it, but to go ahead and either use the half-inch gypsum board, or use the fire-rated products.
If I could...
Well, let's let Kevin go, and then we'll go back to you. Councilmember Kellogg?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was going to point that out also, and I'll ask the fire chief if, if and when he does get up. Um, you know, that, that's held together by glue, and, um, you know, I mean, the, the things that, that concern me about it is not only, you know, it's obvious that they'll give out in time. Um, I, did, am I understanding right that the code, if we, if we continue to, to allow those, that there is an option for spray or a gypsum coverage? Am I correct?
Yes, sir, you are correct.
And that will compel the developer, or the builder, to do that, to make that compliant with, with the fire rating, right?
For the floor assembly, yes, sir.
Okay. Um, do we require, with, like, the spray, um, spray-on adhesive, not adhesive, but spray covering, coating on those I-beams, uh, do we require the sheet rock below it to act as a, 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 a fire block?
If I understand your question, uh, in some, uh, instances where they use a steel I-beam to support the floors, those are required to have coverage. They have a prime, primer coat on there, just like your columns that hold in the garage a beam all the way across. They're required to have a coating on there for, uh, protection. We also require, if there's living space above, say, in a garage, that they have to frame in and wallboard that column to protect that structural... frame in and wallboard that column to protect that structural element.
And that's where I'm going at with that, is that if we do, even in the living space, I live in a raised, not a raised, a split level. My garage is underneath the living area. Okay, so naturally, the fire block is there and it's that sheet rock. That's what we're talking about. In the living area, underneath, above my basement, is my living room. If I have those I-beams in there, okay, what we're saying, that we can apply a coating to those I-beams, so it slows down the burn rate of those, is what we're talking about, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is that enough to cover the regulation, the requirement of the regulation, the code? Or does it require a sheet rock on the bottom side of that joist? This is what I'm talking, is there a requirement for that if the coating is there on that I-beam also?
No, there is not a requirement. They make a product, I-joists and web frame joists, that have sprayed-on fire-resistant coating, as you say. And that would not require the builder to put the sheet rock on there.
So in essence, we could have an open rafter ceiling in a basement situation?
Yes, sir.
With the living area above it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that kind of concerns me, but anyway, go ahead.
Councilmember Wesco?
And that was going to be my concern. If we have a requirement where we have the gypsum layer on top of those I-beams, or the trusses, or, it was silent floor, the stuff that we put in. If the fire is in the basement, what, does that make it even, the floor any more solid if the fire starts in the basement and gets up into those joists, or the floor joists, even if we have the gypsum layer on top?
I think we got it reversed. What we're asking is the gypsum layer be on the bottom to protect the floor. So, in other words, the builder goes in and has an unfinished basement and just uses the I-joist or the web truss joist, we're protecting the framing members from the bottom. The sheeting already has a rated fire in an event it can rate. So that's what we're asking, to go back to the original language, and that's what's in the IRC.
That it's underneath?
It's underneath, like, for example, in basements. The exception also, it does not apply to crawl spaces. It does not apply to areas less than 80 square feet. You know, those are exceptions. Did that help?
Yeah.
Other questions? Thank you. Thank you. Fire Marshal, did you want to have the mic? Okay. If anybody has any questions of the Fire Marshal, this is time to ask. Oh, we got to, you're going to have to come up to the mic. Councilmember Kellogg?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you, Fire Marshal, for being here.
Uh-huh, no problem.
Appreciate it. I'm kind of curious, of your colleagues in the surrounding community, is there, the other communities looking at this also, or is this just something that we're looking at here?
As far as Kansas City, I can't answer that. I know it's big on the East Coast. But just as an example, I got some statistics today, and I'll read, this is from UL. It says, "The introduction of lightweight construction materials should have changed the way you operate on the fire ground. In a series of tests conducted by UL, offered some glaring results. The failure time of a non-protected two-by-ten framing member was 18 minutes and 30 seconds, which is the old type construction, after ignition time. And the equivalent member of the truss joint beam, like John's talking about, drops it down to six minutes and 30 seconds." So, with all that said, by the time you discover a fire, who knows how long that's going to be, by the time 911's called, we get notified, get on the trucks, and get to the scene, it's typically going to be over six minutes. So it's not only a protection for us as the firefighters, it's a protection for you as the citizens, because as we know, we have fatalities every day, because people do not maintain their smoke detectors.
Councilmember Wesco?
This is a question for staff and not necessarily the Fire Marshal. When we put this stuff in the home that we were building, there was actually a, I believe, an ordinance that required notification be put in the windows that that material was used in the home. Is that part of our ordinances or our code, to notify, you know, first responders that this is the type of material that has been used?
I think that's more manufacturer, because I have not seen it in our code book regarding as to having to label that. I do know that the wood trusses for roof trusses are labeled. Now, the web trusses are also labeled, they have a tag on them. But as far as notifying emergency, or emergency 911, I don't, I can't answer that one.
I'll answer that, part of that. Either the state of New Hampshire, New Jersey, one of the East Coast towns has indicated on the electric meter a sticker that says this is light truss construction for the benefit of the fireman. Because we always do a 360 around the house when we get there, and if this were to go into effect, then, like you said, a sticker saying this house has been protected, but this house is not protected, is one of the things that they did on the East Coast for that very question.
I'd like to see us do that in a future ordinance.
We can get to that in just a minute. Any further questions, staff? Thank you. I entertain a motion to dispose of the first reading of Bill 2980.
Mr. Mayor, move that we approve Bill 2980, amending the amendment to Chapter 500 Building Code, Fire Protection of Floors.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the first reading of Bill 2980. Is there any discussion? I thought you were going to say something now. Oh, I'm sorry.
I would actually, now, I don't know if I, if it's appropriate at this point to amend this, but I'd actually like to see an amendment of this code to go further, to where we actually put and require notification, that any time these types of floors are used, that it is a requirement to put some notification on the outside of the building for our firefighters.
I think it'd be appropriate to instruct staff to investigate, because we do have a second reading on this, so we can amend then. Councilmember Morehead?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's actually what I was also going to kind of add. I was, since we had a motion, I was going to ask to amend to not include that right now. Let's just get this specific item dealt with, with a further instruction to staff to follow up with that additional issue, but...
Any other discussion? Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the first reading of Bill 2980. All in favor? One, two, three. Motion carries unanimously. And that takes care of new business. We'll move to public comment. I'll open the floor for public comment. Please identify yourself for the record, keep your comments to under five minutes.
See, I'd like to ask the council and perhaps the city attorney as well, what the council is hoping to receive by July 14th to make a determination if they believe that the lease between Freedom Plaza LLC and WW Grill LLC is a bona fide valid lease. They, I was somewhat confused during the meeting, what the intent or what the hope was to table the decision to July 14th. Prior to tonight's, prior to tonight's meeting, I have not once heard that Warren Wiseman or WW Grill was in dispute of not, perhaps, the amount that they owe, or perhaps the termination of the lease. Oddly enough, with the line of questions that was asked of him, the only question that was not asked of him is, while he was occupying the property, if he has paid or made his monthly obligations. That was the only question I didn't hear tonight. And whether he disputes it now, or whether he disputes it on July 14th, I don't know what information I need to provide the council for them to, for you, to make a decision on July 14th that couldn't be made tonight, other than, of course, an agreement between the parties.
Well, I'll let our city attorney answer that, because he gave guidance to the council. There was three ways the council could vote, and one of the ways was to defer. And I don't remember the exact language that he used. But Joe, if you can restate the reasons for deferment.
By the 14th, Miss O'Malley, we could see that either perhaps you have initiated a legal action to have him removed as your tenant, or you could advise us that you've reached an agreement and have ended the dispute between the two of you. Or you can do an affidavit or indicate that it remains, and you wish him out, and you wish the council to give unfavorable consideration. But due to the late nature of what we received in this, it was very, and the fact that there is a genuine, apparently, dispute between you and your tenant, it was my opinion, and apparently agreed to and spoke to by Councilman Morehead, that it was inappropriate for us to enter into the arena of being a court as to that dispute. Rather give the two of you a chance to either clarify the dispute or end the dispute, and we'd look for whatever information you have on that issue on July. The council didn't issue the license.
And while I understand...
So the council doesn't have the power to declare that lease is terminated, ma'am.
While I...
We do have the power to grant or deny a license, and we deferred that decision to see where that ends up.
While I understand that, the city ordinance requires a bona fide lease at the issuance of the liquor license, is my understanding. And my question is, if obviously the council cannot make a determination for a landlord-tenant dispute, what information can be provided to the council by July 14th? Obviously, a court order would not, I would not be able to provide a court order by July 14th for the council to make that decision.
Well, you could have a legal action initiated by them. If this remains in dispute would be one example of further evidence.
There isn't going to be a clearer answer than that.
Okay. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Andrew Danner. I'm with Ridgeway Villas LP. We're the owner, North Star Housing, the developer, 9907 North Indiana, Kansas City, Missouri, 64155. Just have a couple of questions for the council here tonight. We'd like to ask the council, why after staff recommendation, plant commission approval, and first reading approval by this council, why you all feel that your denial of this transfer agreement is not being unreasonably withheld? As Section 29 of the TIF agreement states, "Such consent shall not be unreasonably withheld." And with the second question here, is there anything we can do to resolve this without further action legally? That's our question for you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Seeing no one, I'll close the public comment period, and move on to mayor/council communication using my handy-dandy list of random council members, or a list of council members in a random order. There we go. This evening, Councilmember Holman, you could go first.
I had two things. Perhaps the first is for Mr. Fearborn. Do we have an anticipated date on when we would see our survey results back on the community, I'm sorry, Civic Center?
I had actually contacted SFS Architecture today to get an update. The survey is getting very good response. They are well over, in fact, within a week and a half, they were over the 350 responses guaranteed.
That's good.
The responses continue to come in on a regular basis, and until those dwindle to a level that they don't feel it's significant information, as far as the percentage is concerned, that we can, the confidence level percentage, they're going to continue to let those come in and continue to process. But I would imagine we're going to see the final results on that to the survey company, for them to final process within a couple of weeks.
That's good information, thank you. The only other thing I had was an apology to Ms. Warner, Mr. Fearborn, probably Mr. Crass. When I asked my questions about the dollar amount, my assumption was that I was in error and missed something. And in kind of a weird lost-wins scenario, I was correct. It wasn't that you had made a mistake that I'd probably messed up, and before you could actually, I saw the kind of look of horror on your face, Jeannie, and before you could catch it, I was like, "Yeah, I'm the one that screwed up." So my apologies again, thank you.
And Councilmember Stevens?
No comments tonight.
Councilmember Morehead?
Couple things. First of all, I would like to welcome our new summer intern. I've had the pleasure of interacting with a couple of them now. I know that at P&amp;Z, we had a wonderful issue of Urban Chickens that was researched by one of them. So I look forward to any input that you provide us, and I have no doubt you'll enjoy the internship. I want to thank Mrs. Seemers and Howdy Schell for their participation with our community as well, and welcome them. I do want to say to Mr. Fearborn, you know, since technically this is kind of your first meeting, I had really resisted the urge to haze you tonight and have a lot of conflict. But you have actually handled these meetings before for Mr. Berlin, so this is technically not your first time. So, but glad to see, and you did a good job tonight. I would mention to my fellow councilmen, in light of the apology, I think Public Works probably does have some sidewalk and roadwork, he'd be happy to have you come out and help toward that apology. So I know he'll get back with you. So that's all I have tonight.
Thank you. Councilmember Hubach?
If I understand correctly, a resolution has no power or force at all.
A resolution has no power or force at all. It only is of limited value. So I want to know, when we were doing this resolution on the liaison, what period of time are we talking about? I suggest that every year, we make a decision on, decide if we want to do it or not. That should be a part of the resolution, the time limitation on it, on that one. Then the next thing had to do with the transfer. I'm not, I'm not an attorney, and I'm not sure that I understand everything, but instead of history, I do remember being on the council, when there was a piece of property in, that was being rezoned, the gentleman who was re-owned the property, got it rezoned, and as soon as it was rezoned, then he would turn it over to the persons that were going to do the developing. And we didn't have any trouble with coming, one person asking for zoning, and another person doing the actual work. So I'm a little hesitant to understand what it is, the problem is, between Ridgeway Villas are the legends. The second thing on that is, I looked under the municipal code to see what we had on TIF and the requirements. And I couldn't find a blessed thing having to do with the TIF. But it says, "Section 29 of the TIF contract requires certain things." But I haven't seen the copy, I don't know what that requirement is. I think we ought to know before we start turning the people up or down on something. And it says that it is necessary to comply with the TIF contract. As I understand this, what we have done does not stop the project in any way. All it does is just stop the, what it says here, that he has to abide by the rules and regulations of the original TIF contract. And what we have said then is, no, we don't want him to abide by the original contract. So what contract do we want him to abide by? That is, is not spelled out in here, and am I wrong, that this does not prevent them from co-ahend with their project? It's just that they don't have to, when this was originally done as a commercial TIF, they set up certain rules and regulations, all right? This is not a commercial enterprise, this is a private, this is a residential one. And so, but it is being handled in a commercial area, and we've already agreed to have the rezoning of that. So now, I guess my question is to you all, is what is next? We haven't stopped them, they've got the rezoning, they can go ahead then and build. All they have to do is show Section 29, and we don't even know what Section 29 says. Does anybody, Mr. Catterett, do you know what Section 29 of the TIF agreement is? Is there anything in this? We don't ask other people the same information, other developers, and I'm, I don't quite understand why we are zoning in on one or two when we don't ask everybody the same questions.
Well, I think what we could do at this point, councilmember, is to ask, Mr. Fearborn, I almost called you a brilliant, oh, I was so close. Mr. Fearborn, I did it, I did it!
It has taken him a year to get Mr. Morehead and Mr. Wesco to sign up.
And I'm still having problems there, so, to research what the impact is to both the city and the developers, since Bill 2971 failed upon first reading, and let us know what that impact is going forward.
We will follow up on that, sir.
Thank you. All right, moving on, if you were done.
I guess that, I had a third thing.
Oh, we only go with two things tonight.
I said, nobody speaks for me but me.
Two and a half, okay, two and a half.
The third thing had to do with aging and Mark, Mid-America... The third thing had to do with aging and, and Mark, Mid-America Regional Council's recent actions on it. They have done Phase One and Phase Two of what they call Communities for All Ages, and they are coming up with some ground rules, so that if we meet them, we can be, receive certification as a community for all ages. And I was wanting to ask Mr. Feerborn if he would find out from Mid-America, Phase One, what it encompassed, and Phase Two, what it's doing. Because the four cities that are involved in that are Prairie Village, Mission, Gladstone, and Raytown. And I would like to see what it is that they have come up with, because I'm concerned and interested in the, the aging group. I'm gonna get old one of these days, and I want to know what's ahead of me.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Abdellgawad?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just, real quick, want to echo the welcome to Mrs. Howdy Shell and Ms. Seamers to the Park Board, and welcome our summer intern. We're glad to have you. Hope you learned a lot. And then, just talk for, briefly about Parks and Recreation Month that Mr. Kennedy spoke about at the beginning of the meeting. I think it's really important for adults and children to get outside, and I just wanted to share, there's a really great book called The Last Child in the Woods, that talks about how children aren't playing outside and that nature deficit. And so, along with his challenge to get outside, I would highly recommend that parents or educators, adults, read that book, Last Child in the Woods. And just a real quick question, the calendar that you shared, Mr. Kennedy, is that on a website somewhere for people to access? Okay, I figured it probably was, but I just wanted to be sure. Thank you.
Councilmember Westco?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, too, would like to echo the other sentiments of the council and, and thank our citizen volunteers for serving on the boards. That is an important role. I, I do believe that our council liaison position, I think, will be very informative, and I think it is going to be a help and not a hindrance. And trust me, I know personally, I have three teenagers. I can't control any of those three, so I know there's no way I would control any of eight members, and I will defer that position to someone else in that, that liaison position. So I'm, I'm not interested. So you don't have to worry about me trying to control anyone, Mrs. Hubach.
Councilmember Kellogg?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to welcome Ms. Howdy Shell and Mrs. Seamers to the organization, and thank you for your service and willingness to share on the, the Parks and Recreation Board. One thing that I will say and give Jeannie a heads up, and the, and the city, the community, the roundabout subcommittee will be meeting on January fourteenth at six PM.
January?
Thank you.
Oh, no, you can meet then, but it's, it's a, it's a, it's a lot of notice there.
Yeah, July, July. I'm sorry, thank you. July fourteenth at six PM is when we're planning on, on meeting. And so, if you can schedule that up for us and notice it up, we'd appreciate it. Then a question for staff also, or comment. I, I've received a phone call, and very appreciative of the curb replacement programs going on. They've, they've come through Fox Haven and done a really good job. They did in front of my house. But anyway, one of the comments that I got, they, the, the neighbors were saying that on one side of the street, the contractor came back and filled in between the gaps of the, the earth and the new curb, and on the other side, there's a big gap there, and they're wondering if the contractors are gonna come back and, and fill that in with, with, fill dirt or, or something, so that, that crack isn't there. And I think that's all I got.
Great, thank you. I, too, will welcome our new summer intern, and my apologies if I get your name wrong, but I wrote it down as Alexa Case. Okay? And the reaction you had to the comment of Urban Chickens? Perfect, okay?
I've heard all that.
Very good, very good. Kudos to the Parks Department for their inaugural Arts in the Park this last Saturday, wasn't it? Saturday was a very active day here in Cass County, because it started over in Belton with their Community Days Parade, then we, Raymore took over with Arts in the Park, and that, at least for the period of time that I was there, looked to be very well attended. And then it ended at seven o'clock at night over in Peculiar, where they did their tractor pull, which I completely forgot about, or I would have gone out there. It's been years since I've been to a tractor pull. The only other thing that I have on my notes here is to remind the council that the Westgate MML Civic Leadership Awards Dinner is coming up. If you would like to attend that dinner, please let Jeannie know. We do have reason to go into executive session this evening, so I entertain a motion to go into executive session for litigation matters as authorized by Section six, ten, oh two one, Sub One.
Mr. Mayor, move that we move into executive session to discuss litigation matters as authorized by six one oh dot oh two one subsection one.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Abdellgawad?
Yes.
Councilmember Boehner absent. Councilmember Holman?
Yes.
Councilmember Hubach?
Yes.
Councilmember Kellogg?
Yes.
Councilmember Morehead?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Westco?
Aye.
We will go into executive session. We'll reconvene only to adjourn the main meeting. Thank you, everybody.